Daylight savings. How old is he?
The city council's agenda meeting for November 2nd, 2021. Start off with a call order, seven o'clock, followed by a moment of silence, then the pledge of allegiance and roll call. And obviously, President Potter can't make it tonight. He's somewhere in the skies, probably Midwest, having a flight issue. So. Well, it's Karen and Wes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori. And. Who's second? Who's second?
I thought.
I think it's Karen.
I think it's Lori and Wes.
Okay, thank you. We have three more minutes. Usual.
Yeah.
Okay. And full public, and I understand from Julie, we have two in the first that have been sent in. And we do standing committee reports. Then the officials reports. And there are communications petitions and claims. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one's on ordinance 95, 2021, and it's amending the zoning map for the car wash at 3657 East Main Street. And the second one is 98, 2021. It's amending the zoning map for the parcel numbers listed in Appendix A, moving to a planned unit development. Through the public hearings, we'll do verifications of copies and then move into our third readings. And under third readings, we have ordinance 95, and that's the first public hearing tonight. Then ordinance 98, which is the second public hearing tonight. First one, 95 is introduced by Morrison, second by Peck. And 98 is introduced by Morrison and seconded by Rodriguez. And that's all the third readings we have. The second reading, we have ordinance 99, 2021. It's replacement pages with codified ordinances. And we have that being introduced by Rodriguez and seconded by Thompson. And the same for suspend and adopt. The first reading. We have ordinance 105, 2021. That's the storm of sanitary easements in Norton Crossing. That one's being read by title only. Then we have ordinance 106, 2021. And it's a fund transfer of $24,818.75 to the debt service account. Introduced by myself. Chris, can you introduce that one?
Sure.
Would somebody like to second that one?
I will.
I heard through your floor. Larry. Thanks, Larry. That's for suspend and adopt.
Okay.
We have ordinance 107, 2021. It's supplemental appropriation $98,400 to the debt service account. That is being read by title only. And we have ordinance 108, 2021. And it is a appropriation transfer of $14,000 to the rec forward slash per fund expense account. Was be introduced by myself. Wes, would you like to introduce that? Who would like the second bit? I got a Karen Thomas. That will be to suspend and adopt. We have number 109, 2021. It's supplemental appropriation $9,500 to the street new equipment expense account. That will be introduced by Peck and seconded by Morrison. And that is to suspend and adopt. We have ordinance 110, 2021. Appropriation transfer $8,000 to the civil testing expense account. I was to introduce that. So Karen, would you like to introduce that one?
Sure.
And I need someone to second that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joanna. And that will be to suspend and adopt. And we have one that's 111, 2021. It's a supplemental appropriation of $400,000 to the income tax refund expense account. Karen, I've had you down as a second. So would you like to introduce that?
Sure.
And.
I'll do that.
Okay, Wes. That's to suspend and adopt. Ordinance 112, 2021. It's a supplemental appropriation of $29,000 for the insurance bonds expense account. This was, I think the mayor sent us an email on this, and I appreciate that. It was pretty straightforward and understandably needed. Need someone to introduce this.
I will.
Wes?
I'll say.
Okay, Larry, thanks. That will be to suspend and adopt. Is there any discussion on that one?
No, it's pretty easy to read. Thank you.
Yeah. Then we have resolution 30, 2021. It's a then and now. Chris, would you like to introduce that one?
All right.
I need a second.
I will.
Thanks, Lori. That will be to suspend and adopt. And then we finish with resolution 31. And that's the recognition of Roscoe Crozier. And I believe you have a proclamation and.
Yes.
As we pass that, suspend and adopt it, which is Elmore Rodriguez. Then I will give you the opportunity to read your proclamation. Then we will go into our second poll public, and I believe we have one for that one, Julie. The community board. Poll council. And adjourned. Thoughts? We are adjourned. Welcome, everybody.
Oh, hello.
The Whitehall City Council meeting on this day, November 2nd, 2021. If you would, join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
The United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow the roll.
Morrison.
Present.
Gander.
Present.
Beck.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
President.
Mr. President, I'd like to excuse the absent member of council.
Thank you, most of you. I'll second that. Motion by Elmore and a second by Tanner to excuse the absent member. Pretty much a chair. Mrs. Al, would you please spell the roll?
Harrison.
Yes.
Gander.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused at this time. I take a motion to approve the October 19th, 2021 agenda and regular meeting minutes.
Sure, President Protown. I will make the motion to approve the October 19th minutes.
Second. A motion by Thompson, second by Tanner to approve the minutes. Miss Al, would you please call a roll?
Harrison.
Yes.
Gander.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore. Yes.
Minutes have been approved. It's the first opportunity to poll the public. Mrs. Al, do you have anyone that has submitted anything?
Yes.
Jeff, 466 Maplewood Avenue, Whitehall, Ohio. When I was a young man in a small town, a charming girl from another town baited me into thinking I was her one and only. My thinking got switched up when I learned other young men were also her one and onlys. Now, as an old man, I'm experiencing bait and switch deja vu. But in the averse, my 2021 Whitehall absentee ballot appeared to have me voting on a referendum by petition until I flipped over the small mailing instruction insert that is always in the absentee ballot pack and discovered that I wasn't voting on a referendum. Wow, that was a switch. But where was the bait? It didn't arrive until after the switch, when I scarcely discovered that opportunity is here for me. That is, to hear Wuda Cooper soft sell the enclave hard sell on November 3rd. I rate, sign me, and now at least I can but ask, is it penned in the master plan to order the size extra large model from the Wuda Christmas TIFs catalog for Maplewood with said mega unit delivered courtesy of Wuda Cooper LIHTC Construction Financing Proprietory? If it is in the master plan, perhaps penciled in by the density embracing arms and already validated by emergency declaration, kindly disregard this poll public. May I leave you with a song clip from Alabama 3, "Real Estate Assassins Assessing My Predicament," unquote. Gerald Dixon, 3877 Doni Street. I oppose yet another car wash going in, this time on Main Street, per ordinance 95, 2021. What nobody considered when the other was put in on Broad Street and that none of you have had to endure is the noise into the residential areas. The one on Broad Street was so loud, it could be heard clearly on Albert. My yard, which was such a green oasis, turned into a nightmare for me. Wherever I went, including the backyard, instead of the sweet quiet of nature, I only now heard the loud whooshing of the constant car wash one block away. There was nowhere in my yard to get away from that noise. Even in my house, I had to close the windows to prevent hearing it. What no one seems to take into account when considering this monstrosity up against a residential area was that it is nothing like all the other businesses in the area, all of which are largely static. People arrive in their car and either get out and go into the store or queue up the drive through, that which is largely innocuous to the quality of life of the residents who live nearby. A large drag through car wash, though, is anything but static. It's a very loud, whirring, swooshing machine which cars pass through, whose noise parameters everyone lives in a two block radius. This will do the same. I want council to consider the citizens they're supposed to be representing and the quality of life. I'm tired of anything and everything getting approved through council simply because it adds another feather in leaders' business caps. Your priorities are the people who elected you to represent them, not the businesses and not the mayor and Mr. Woodruff and everything they send down the pipe for you to adore and approve without thought to the impacts on the residents. Unless or until it is proposed for the corner of Country Club and Fairway, it shouldn't be approved over by the Woods, whose residents are feeling increasingly abused by the various proposals which you have have been constantly approving. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Jeff and Gerald, for sending in your comments. Standing committee reports, administration, financial management, did need last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have a number of items to be introduced tonight. And we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. Community and elder advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Protown. Community and elder advocacy met on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have a resolution 31 asking favorable passage on. And we will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30. Thank you.
New standards and enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Ms. President. We met, uh, community standard and enforcement, we met last Tuesday. Minutes are on file. Meeting next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have two ordinances up for consideration this evening, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Peck.
Thank you, President Protown. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have one piece of legislation up for consideration tonight, ordinance number 109, 2021. And we will meet next Tuesday sometime around 6:30.
Public Safety, Chairperson Thompson.
Thank you, President Protown. Public Safety also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again Tuesday around 6:40.
Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Protown. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again that week right after 6:30.
That brings us to our officials' reports, and tonight we'll start with Mayor Mager.
Good evening. I would ask for council's favorable consideration of ordinances 95, 98, 106, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112, and also resolution 30. Thank you very much. And 31, thank you.
Brings us to our city attorney, Michael Todd Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. Members of council, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Sent in year to date, and the city attorney caught me off guard with that. In the city attorney's office, we've handled 2,861 cases a year to date. In the month of October, the city attorney's office handled 253 cases. Out of those 253 cases, 45 of those were committed by Whitehall residents. That's an upward tick of about 17%. So normally, we hover around 11 to 13%, but we're about 17% now. Don't know what that, why that trend is going in that direction, but it is. November the 9th, I will be speaking at Whitehall Yearling High School with Ohio Dive Stone Prevention Services. We'll be on a panel discussing internet crimes. But that is a small thing as it relates to November 9th, because I want to in advance make an announcement that November 9th is a very, 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 very special day. It is the day that God decided that my wife would be born.
Wow.
I was a resident that day.
I want to celebrate her in advance, because we do not have counsel that night, and I will not be able to say it publicly. But in advance, Joy Bivens, happy birthday on November 9th. You are the love of my life, and I thank God that you get another lap around the sun. I did that on purpose. You gave me the thought, President Protown. When you embarrassed me, I'm like, okay, I need to share the love, so.
Are you going to take a bow?
I would be 29 again. Great thing, isn't it?
27.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that brings us to our city administrator, Zach Woodruff.
As always, I follow that. No official reports.
Bring us to Treasurer Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have no official reports.
Okay, thank you. There have been no official's reports filed in council's office since the last meeting. Under communications, petitions, and claims, there have been no communications, petitions, and claims filed in council office since the last meeting. So that brings us to our public hearings. We have two tonight, and the first is ordinance 95, 2021, is amending zoning map attached to chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of City Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing special permit under 1123.10C29 to allow Express Wash Concepts LLC to operate a car wash establishment on the property located at 3657 East Main Streets, parcel number 090-008371, owned by 3657 East Main LLC. And I will open the public hearing on ordinance 95 and call for any proponents or those who wish to speak for or in favor of ordinance 95.
Me first?
Yeah. Just need your name and address for the record.
Before I say my name and address for the record, I want this woman car washed to present it to her wife for her birth.
Uh, thank you so much.
She'll be there. Oh, goodness. You're in trouble, fellow. She's going to get you. Oh, yeah.
Well, this is coming up. My name is Jeff Gilger. I'm VP of Development for Express Wash Concepts, which is the parent company of Mumu Express Car Wash, who is the applicant for case 95. And.
Did you address her?
Oh, 1313375 National Road Southwest, Ethna, Ohio 43068.
That's her.
Well, one of the benefits of coming to Whitehall and speaking to you, I'd like to assume that everybody here is relatively familiar with this product. Does anybody not heard of us or not been to a movement very long? Um, we look for great sites and great communities, and we've been increasing our density in the central Ohio market. I don't know if you've noticed the new unit we built on East Main in front of the Value City Furniture, just on the other side, 270. That was our latest prototype. We opened that maybe six, seven months ago. We just opened on South Hamilton Road, adjacent to residential, ironically, our 22nd car wash. We have about four or five more in different development stages around central Ohio. And Whitehall is one of the new markets we hope to become a part of. So not sure what the technical glitches might be here. Has, have they received the package? Have they seen?
We did receive the planning commission minutes.
So if I'm not mistaken, the parcel that we're in contract purchase has been vacant since the development. We, you know, we are proposing to put a car wash almost identical to the Main Street car wash in terms of its fit, finish, landscaping, everything else, except for planning commission's request was that we changed the building to white in color, which we agreed to do. And we resubmitted some colors of some white architecture of other launches.
All right, now I got your landscape.
Basically, you come in from Main Street on the access drive that serves the Walmart facility and queue and enter into the stack lanes there on the top, upper right hand corner of site lane. There's three staffing lanes. You queue or rotate to the left, and then there's pay stations perpendicular to the back lot, the free back lot. And then you go into the car wash. The outside lane is, we designate for our club members that have our limited launch passes, which is a great value. I encourage you all to invest in one. When we open this one, we'll be discounting them for 99 cents for the first month. You go through the tunnel, three minutes or less, exit the tunnel, and then you can either turn left into the back lot or exit right into the service road that is between this parcel and the Walmart parking field. We also, based on planning commission's recommendations, we relocated our dumpster enclosure towards the, I guess it's the south end. South end of the property, similar to Main Street. And if I'm not mistaken, this is actually the Main Street landscape that we're provided. So our plan is a little different. Our sign, we can't look here, sign out in the front, because there's an easement along Main Street. We were proposing to locate sign in the upper left hand corner and basically the curb by the entrance area there outside of the sewer easement. And I think we proposed two fewer trees in the front as well. But other than that, that's the general plan for Whitehall location. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
As I said, we did receive planning commission minutes, and they pretty much covered everything. And you described some of it, most of it.
What are your hours?
We're open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Monday through, like?
Monday through Saturday. Sunday, we are nine to six. And then on holidays, typically, we close at four o'clock, just mostly for staff. And then we're closed Christmas, Thanksgiving, and, you know, the traditional.
How many vacuums do you have there?
I, we try to get 20 in each location that are designated there, but probably 11 on the far side.
How many people do you have working normally?
We typically have about five or six full time and maybe another six to eight part time.
That's manned all the time, correct?
What's that?
There's somebody there all the time?
Never, never less than two people. We're never open if we're not onsite. You know, one of the things, part of our company mantra is you can't sell clean if you're not clean. And we have this like Disney perfect, you know, we want our sites to be an amenity to the community. We want them to be clean and neat. We do a lot of landscaping and planting and flowers. You know, a lot of, I'll say, the older car wash models that were unmanned and became kind of trash receptacles and eyesores and so forth. So.
I noticed on some of your other ones, I've actually been there. I wanted to see what they actually look like along with your competitors. You keep them very clean as well.
Yeah, we do our best.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do.
And you even in your process filter and reuse water in certain phases of your process.
Yeah, we we everything that goes on in the car is captured in our conveyor trench and goes out. We got a series up there in the parking lot under the, under the pavement where the backs are. But we capture all the water, go through a series of filtrations and sand filtrations. It comes back into the building. We inject some ozone into it and then we separate the water into like, like a pure water and a. A water we use to for the soap dilution. So we're reusing, we only use about fifteen to twenty gallons of fresh water per car, so.
You're good. And you're also putting in heat in the exit.
Correct.
Where the cars would jerk off. So in the winter, it's not pouring ice. I'd like that to.
The the exit tunnel basically to the earth is heated concrete. We actually wash cars as long as the temperature is above zero. It's below zero, we're closed. If it's zero and rising, we're open. And yes, we need to keep that exit component for the residual water. It's basically under the car. Most of the surface and body of the car is dry when it exits the wash.
Yeah, so you're not doing any service other than the customer vacuuming themselves. Your personnel doing nothing outside.
It's a self-service business and it's basically a giant vending machine for the customer. We load the cars, we inform the customers of the purchase options. We, but we don't, we don't service the car.
We had a resident address of noise issue. Can you address, is the noise heard from a block away?
Yeah.
Regards to.
I don't know which car wash she was referring to when her.
Because I've I've been to your car washes. I guess I haven't experienced that.
We change over our vacuum systems or vacuums are like whisper quiet. I mean, they're way lower than just residual traffic noise. I said, if you stood out on Main Street and just looked at a decibel meter for road noise. Our our car wash is quieter. You will get some noise at the tunnel exit where the the blowers are working. But it dissipates pretty rapidly over distance. We find that it's under like sixty decibels by the time it travels seventy five feet. Which is way before it reaches any kind of residential stuff.
And that's not even facing Main Street. That's actually facing Walmart, correct?
On next stage, vacuum, do you have a trash can?
Yeah, every every back system has a trash can at the back. It's mounted on the back. And there's a a new, he's a mat holder. And we have a couple of different tools on the vacuums now. There's a broad tool and a crevice tool with each back station. We put a little curved LED light there. It it's ironic that we we kind of. We only operate maybe three months of the year when it's dark, you know, for the dead winter from maybe five thirty to eight. But other than that, it's 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 light, so.
Do you have security there? Especially in the evening hours when you're just.
We, we have added weekend security. We have a location in Bexley and East Livingston.
Right.
And we have some security there on the weekends. Typically no. I mean, it's all going to merit the facility and the residents and the activity around the site. But you know, we want our personal to be safe, obviously.
As well as the rest of the.
Yeah, absolutely.
You and you have somebody, you said like you guys are really about being clean. You have somebody kind of walking in the parking lot to make sure that the trash is actually making it to the trash can.
Yeah, there's there's three active, I'll say positions, the loader, the kiosk attendant, the back attendant. And you know, that contains goals to make sure the trash cans stay empty and the residual trash is picked up. You know, some people are slobs and we pick up that from. So yeah, the goal is to keep it.
Thank you.
It'll be cleaner than Walmart's parking lot.
Four songs.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, any more questions?
Any questions?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of ordinance ninety five twenty twenty one?
Thank you.
Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Kelsey Miller, with two six two, South Green Street in Columbus, Ohio, four three two two two. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I hope everyone had a good and spooky weekend this last weekend. So I'm here to present the staff report for the applicant here. And of course, I know that we kind of went over their, you know, the applicant is applying for a special use permit. To in our general commerce district within our overlay to allow a car washing establishment in the area. For the evaluation of the car wash, staff reviewed the proposal based on the special use standards and eleven twenty four point eleven. And to kind of go over what those special use standards are, the minimum lot requirement is thirty thousand square feet, which is met by the applicant. As well as our setbacks and screening requirements that the structure should be at least fifty feet from the adjacent residential property. With us, in regards to, since this isn't up against a residential property. We also don't need to worry about having a solid fence wall or hedge at least six feet high. And in terms of the limitation on use, all of the washing facilities shall be located entirely within an enclosed building. Except entrance and exit doors, as we talked about, that requirement has been met as well. The vacuuming and cleaning equipment may be located outside a building, but not be closer than fifty feet from residential property. So we're good there too. In terms of the off-street waiting and circulation, five off-street waiting spaces. Spaces needed to be provided for each car washing device or stall. Fifteen off-street waiting spaces for the assembly line, washing establishment and two parking spaces at the end of each washing bay. For each hand, for drying and hand finishing vehicles, also vet by the applicant. As well as a hard surface exit drive, not less than forty feet in length should be provided between the exit doors and streets. The access and traffic impact, the access shall be from an arterial street or commercial collector. And in this case, the circulation of drive-through maintains existing traffic flow. Pedestrian traffic should not conflict with the drive-through kiosks. So that requirement is also met. We had talked to the applicant as well and worked with the applicant in terms of the color of the building. They are considering white over red. That was a suggestion of the planning commission. And we are also working with them in terms of the actual landscaping, landscape trees that they plan to use. We had a suggestion of switching out a couple of plants and trees and they've been really great to work with in that regard. So with that being said, the staff recommendation is that the planning commission, is that the planning commission, the city council. Give a favorable recommendation to the application for requesting the special permit. To allow that car wash on, in the general commerce district. So with that being said, thank you very much. If anybody has any other questions for staff, let me know. Yeah? Alright, thank you.
Anyone else was to speak for ninety five twenty one? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or against ordinance ninety five twenty one? Hearing nothing, I will close the hearing, public hearing on ordinance ninety five twenty twenty one. Bring us to our second public hearing. It's ordinance ninety eight twenty twenty one. Ending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of City of Whitehall, Ohio. And as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located on East Broad Street, Hamilton Road. Woodcliff Drive, Midcliff Drive and Pop Road, parcel numbers listed in appendix A. From apartment district A two, exceptional use EU and floodplain district PF. To planned unit development, PUD, property owned by the city Whitehall and declaring emergency. Are there, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance ninety eight twenty twenty one? Hi, Mike. Name and address for the record, please.
Evening, Mr. President, members of council. Mike Shannon, five one six six, Edna Road, Whitehall, Ohio. Attorney on behalf of NR, I, who is. Kind of a co-applicant along with the city of Whitehall in this application. So this has been a long time coming. This is a culmination of the city council's hard work. The administration's hard work that has gone on for over a decade. We all know the history of Woodcliff and the ten years the city spent in court to get rid of this public nuisance. I'm here tonight, very excited to talk to you about the planned unit development rezoning project. For the fifty-four acres that encompass the former Woodcliff site. Okay. My client is thrilled to be in a partnership with the city. The PUD is a unique zoning category. That allows maximum flexibility while at the same time providing a lot of control for both the city and the developer. To kind of maximize the potential for this site. The process has taken over two years, just a little under two years, and working through the pandemic and various issues. My client has spared no expense in terms of turning up a quality development project. From the get-go, they hired an internationally renowned land use firm, DPZ, to help put together the land use plan. We're about to see. The, there you go. And through various conversations and a week-long charrette. That involved elected officials from city council, mayor, certainly Zach and other administrative officials. As well as my clients and a team from DPZ, we came up with the notion of three divisions, if you will. And you can just see there, the the three sub areas, if you will, that were created in that week-long process. They took together all the comments, synthesized the comments, and by the end of the week, they were able to unveil this. This was our blueprint for growth and over a period of time, we were able to negotiate the development agreement. We were able to have Mr. Iman, the principal architect for the project and propose a lot of other roles too. Not only was MA architects involved, I think Robin and Andrew to have a top shelf landscape architect and designer. And the end result that we have for you this evening is what we call Phase One A of the proposed development. This sub area is bounded by, obviously Broad Street on the south and Hamilton Road on the west. It's the corner of the three areas you see. Again, you'll see that public space has been integrated through this site. There's a vista that's going to be achieved from the Broad and Hamilton corner. As you look in the north easterly direction, there's connectivity visually all the way to that open space. Where the lake amenity has been added and there's a planned future pavilion and amphitheater. That center corridor is actually going to be a promenade. Those yellow buildings you'll see as we get into some further site land information. Outline the the promenade that will be for pedestrians. The yellow buildings you see are mixed use buildings. The yellow column on the bottom right. Would be what we're going to refer to as Building A and we get when we get to our elevations. And they consist of mixed use, commercial retail uses on the ground floors. There again, you can see we've kind of got the site plan here. And this is very important because this site plan is not going to change. In terms of the building footprints and the parking spaces, the buffers, the setbacks, those will be engraved in stone. What the PUD affords you is maximum flexibility in the design component. So as we get more green in order in a minute and look at detailed elevations. You'll see that on that promenade, the center corridor that goes diagonally to the north and east. That will be outlined with ground floor, commercial. There'll be multi-family above. Some of them will be live and working units. And it's going to be the the hub of activity for Phase One. The other buildings that you see that come out and extend both down to Broad Street and down to Hamilton Road. Similarly, mixed use buildings with ground floor retail. I think you'll see quite a bit of restaurant usage. Particularly in what we call end caps of those respective buildings. And again, I'm talking about, looks like an inverted Y from the bottom left-hand corner. As you, as you progress up Hamilton Road to the north, you'll see building what we refer to as Building C. And that again is, this is a standalone apartment complex. Entirely be able to show you the elevations and architectural design on that. As you get all the way north to the upper end, you'll see another apartment building. As we go to the east and you see the kind of inverted L-shaped building, that will be a clubhouse that you'll see. And then along the parking lots, we have what we call liner buildings, which will be unique residential type structures. That each have a, a different, a different ambiance, a different look. And then as we progress down all the way to Broad Street, you'll see that we have liner buildings. Again, it's an inverted L shape down there at the bottom. Zach will be able to go through iterations. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Zach to go over the elevations. He's going to show you that. We had a set of elevations that were ready for the Planning and Zoning Commission and they were beautiful. In the short period of time that we had from planning and zoning, we have updated iterations. To show you the amount of time and effort that's been put into the design, which is still an ongoing process. But again, this sets the template for the entire fifty-four acres. What you see is what you get here. And the blueprint for the future is governed by a master plan that's always done in concert with DPZ. So Zach, if you want to go to the elevations.
So just before we get into elevations, maybe I'll stop here to ask if there are questions related to. To Phase One. Again, just to reiterate a little bit of what Mike was saying. This is Phase One of what'll be a multi-phase, multi-year plan. Phase One, the footprint, what you see is absolutely what will take place in Phase One. Future phases, as you've seen in the site plan. The the development agreement as well as the the plan allow for flexibility in future phases. Because you know, there's, there's not the ability to look forward seven years from now, five years from now. And and know exactly where that building needs to be or the need of a commercial tenant. And the future phases are governed under both the development agreement that the city entered into last year. As well as the design guidelines that the planning commission and that you all have. So you can see that it still allows for flexibility while still applying oversight and some guardrails to the project. To ensure that we get the type of uses and the quality in the future without dictating. You know, this building here needs to be seven thousand five hundred and fifty-two square feet seven years from now. So before I get to elevate, before I get to the elevations, does anyone on council have any questions about the layout of Phase One A?
Is the pond like whatever you want to call it? Is that part of Phase One?
It is.
Okay.
So everything you see in color today is part of Phase One. So the pond that is situated on the old golf dome site. That will need to be put in for the water retention and water quality standards. So that is being built, that portion of the pond is being built as part of Phase One.
And then the future development, so that will just be grass until we get to it or what is that going to kind of look like? Because it's kind of like in the middle of the two.
Correct. So the plan today is that we expect demolition to begin soon. And demolition of the existing duplex, all the duplexes, all of that will occur. On the entire thirty-four, thirty-five acre Woodcliff site. On where it says future phase, just the. Just the structures and the existing road network will be taken out. Where that road comes in, that's right across the street from like Charisma Life, right? Everything north of that, the structures will be taken down. But I don't anticipate at this time that the actual road network would be taken up. Now, obviously, we're not going to have them connected to this new roadway, but the roads will, will remain and but the structures will come down. In Phase One, all of the, any trees that have to be removed for the development will come down. In the future development, future phase there, I would imagine that the tree, all the trees, most of the trees will stay. Until a such time as that Phase Two is ready to be developed. So I would imagine grass and trees and now, one of the things that we've talked to the team about is having some sort of. Sidewalk, some sort of walkway that will extend from the end of the promenade. All the way up to where you cross the street to go down to the amphitheater area and down to the pond. So that there's good connection even while that Phase Two isn't, isn't built yet. So there will be that connectivity. One of the things that I do want to also mention in this phase is as part of our OPWC project. And the Broad and Hamilton intersection improvement project. A lot of Broad Street and Hamilton Road are going to get redone at the same time construction is going on. And so part of it is what we have called realigning Woodcliff Drive. So that the, the road that is closest to where the ravine, you know, kind of falls off. Where that comes out to Broad Street, there will be a new traffic signal put in there. And at the light on Hamilton with where Charisma Life and then all of that flex industrial is behind them. That will be a signalized intersection as well. The remaining streets that you see, so we kind of, again, if you're kind of looking right to left. That first road that where I talked about on Broad having the intersection. We call that roadway one, then roadway two and roadway three as you get closer to Hamilton. So all of the other curb cuts you see, you know, will not be signalized.
So once, once all the clearing is done, all the structures and whatever trees, not only just in Phase One, but in two and three, that would do all that at one time, correct?
The structures?
The buildings that are.
Yes, the buildings that are there now will all be demoed at one time. For the whole, right, all one hundred and fifty-four structures will be demoed all at one time.
Okay.
What is different beyond Phase One is are there trees that are coming down? Are there road networks that are coming up? I can promise you in, in Phase One and what I'll call that Phase Two, the road network will come out. Again, the only place where I foresee us taking down trees is part of that Phase One and obviously where the roads are.
Okay, and. Once, once Phase One is started and the clearing is done also on Phase Two and Three. Is this property going to be maintained as far as grass cutting and keeping up? The code for grass and keeping the property clean and maintained? Or is it going to become an eyesore with four-foot weeds?
Well, certainly not going to become an eyesore. What we have had conversations with the developer about, you know, future up north. And, you know, maybe that being a little more wild with wildflowers and whatnot. Maybe again, allowing for the growth further back off of the streets to potentially get higher. But I would anticipate that that future phase here, what I'm calling Phase Two, would certainly be, be mowed and maintained. Any other questions? Okay, so I will, I will attempt here to pull up elevations. Sorry. Think I have it now. This is a large file, so it, you know, take, it does take a minute to. Kind of load. Yeah, because you are definitely the person I would look to for technical help. So this is a view. If, as you kind of look at, as we talked about those roads, you know, so this is kind of roadway three. You can see that these are the four-story buildings, A and B. And you can see a view down that central promenade. You can see where we anticipate having first floor commercial. Again, as Mike mentioned, you know, we obviously believe that this will be a lot of restaurants. And whatnot with then residential above. But gives you a sense of kind of what that view down, this, this new intersection, new promenade is going to look like. This is a view from Hamilton. Again, that first building you see is Building A. John, tell me if I'm wrong at any point in time, is Building B. How dare I? Building B, and you can see, again, that's the first floor retail. You can kind of see here in the, in the forefront here, you know, we anticipate there being a patio. For restaurants facing Hamilton. And then a little further to the left, you can see Building C. Which is another four-story residential building with some tuck under parking. Oh, moving away.
Great, can you send these to us?
No. Absolutely. Yes, no, we can send these to you. This is a view again of the building along, you know, out where you would see from Broad and Hamilton. What we've created are these gallery spaces where, you know, a portion of the sidewalk would be covered. People could walk under it or it could also be space for restaurants to have outdoor patios or whatnot. This is a view of what one of the end caps will, will look like. You can see again, the intent and the vision is to have these big outdoor patios again for restaurants and for entertainment. This is a view down the gallery. Sorry, yes, I'm sorry, from down the promenade. So these middle sections are intended where you have mostly retail and restaurants kind of at the ends. The middle is intended to be these work-live units and we're really excited about these. These units will allow for space on the, the first floor. And then stairs to a mezzanine level where there'll be a studio apartment. So it could be for, you know, an entrepreneur, a startup, an artist, creative type, a maker. To be able to have their work and live unit, again, creating that energy down, down the promenade. Get another view. This is the other building, this is Building A. And again, you can see where we have that gallery space. One of the things that I, you know, want to give credit to John and his team is, you know. And you'll see it in some additional elevations we have. One of the things that we're really excited about and in 2D pictures don't really do it justice. Because you can't really get a sense of part of the building coming out and, you know, different parapets is. This is intended to look like something that was built over time. But still having, you know, kind of looking like cousins, you know, it's all part of the same family with building materials that, you know, go together. But again, give a look like it's not just one very large building. But again, break it up to look like multiple buildings. So again, this is another view of Building A facing west. So again, what you would see, you know, going down Hamilton Road, that, that first picture I showed you where you could kind of see the, the patio. This is Building A. That's what I thought. Right, so this is building, it says Building A, I'm sorry, Building C. This is that resid, that four-story residential you saw in that first picture or second picture. Again, I, I think they've done a wonderful job of breaking this up. And you can see how they've done a really good job of mixing it with, with balconies, with Juliette balconies. And again, giving it a, a really nice feel as it fronts Hamilton Road. This is the, the. The weather, this is really the south elevation, right? Yeah, so this is the end of C. So as you're, you're driving down, this is kind of, and again, you can see, you know, really how they've done, you know, a really good job of making it look like multiple buildings. You know, to the right there on the first levels where you'd have that, the park under parking. This is, still says Building A. It's right, so this is, this is the, this will be along that narrow road coming in at Charisma Life. This is actually a three-story walk-up. The other buildings that we've seen so far are a four-story elevator building. This is a three-story walk-up. Again, I think that John and his team have done a really great job of really dressing this up. To not necessarily look like a four-story walk-up because they've enclosed the stairs. This is a, you know, the side view of that. I think the, those balconies are just exceptional and I think people will really respond well to them. These are those liner buildings and we'll show you some updated renderings of these. But again, what, what you can see is the intent to pull these up to give it a very pedestrian feel along that, that roadway number two. That middle road that kind of bisects, the promenade is intended to feel more pedestrian, more urban feel. And so these are, again, these are tuck under parking on the first floor with the residential above it. This is another one of them. And then this building, and it's a little hard to see, is on the corner of Broad Street and that roadway two. And again, we'll show you some updated renderings of this. But again, the idea is that it's parking, you know, under the first floor or at the first floor level with the residential above it. This is a picture of the clubhouse, another view. Again, these will be, you know, along that, you know, that road that comes off of the Hamilton signalized intersection. So that's, I wanted to give you again, as we talked about, wanted to give you kind of a feel of what, what these were going to look like. And then. Where is the other one? So this is, these are some of the updated pictures. So John, help me out just because I want to make, you know, they're not labeled, I don't think, so I want to make sure I'm not saying it stupid. So this is down the promenade. These are the worklifts. So again, you can see just the, the minor changes from the elevation I just showed you. Again, really working on how to make these feel like separate buildings, but having similar building materials. So there's a cohesive theme, but again, with different heights, give you that, that sense. So again, here, you know, here's a view kind of of that other building. So again, that would be your view down Broad again, and the 2D just doesn't give it. We were fortunate last week to see kind of the 3D and you can really get a sense of, you know, the, the Juliette balconies coming out a little bit. The full balcony is coming out more, the difference in the parapet. It really does give it a different feel than, than what these, these 2D are. Again, this is, you know, what the side of, of that building will look like. You know, here's again, those three-story walk-ups. Again, you can see that, you know, we've had some minor changes to, to, you know, just again, give the building a little different feels. We're picking out actual material.
John, are those setbacks, go back on? Are those setbacks in between or is that? Right there, they're narrow part between the roof elevations. So they're connectors then? They're, they're connectors in a sense.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, nice.
Gotcha. Yeah, so that's right here. Have you even got to see where my mouse is? So those are those where the stairs are. So again, by enclosing them, you know, a little bit different than what we have at Norton Crossing. You know, you can see it really does, I think, pull the building together.
I love the movement, it just, I mean, just a lot of, that's beautiful.
These are an updated of the liners. Again, John and I have had lots of conversations about how depending on which computer and which screen and which projector, everything looks different. I could tell you on my screen, that's not nearly as dark. But the intent here is to do, these will be brick, right John? These are brick. And so again, you can see, you know, the idea is to give them more of that urban pedestrian kind of orientation. Again, with stairs, you know, in that middle piece to then the units on either side, again, with the parking underneath.
So you say they're brick, I mean, seems to me the, the, the two thousand twenty-ish era, brick seems to be gray, black. This really different, and then you say these, these buildings are going to be like over time. What, what, what kind of a palette are you looking at on these, John?
John, you want to talk about the palette?
Well, yeah, I understand, but still, I mean, are we talking more traditionally, the, you know, the reds and the, and, you know, the buffs and stuff like that? Are you talking?
All, all over the board, because what we're trying to do is for each building, create a family of materials and colors. And then vary that around each one of the other buildings.
So, so I mean, these are more, these are, I think, in that palette that you were just talking about, Chris. Would you agree, John?
Yeah, they should, you know, these two Ds, as Zach's saying, it's really hard to reach. So last week, we had Terry, well, they fell for, and Zach came over as well in our office. We spent two days doing nothing but looking at brick samples and paint samples and wood samples. Basically compose the elevations that we're looking at.
So we're looking like, like, like a cushy wall brick, something really soft or, and molded, or are you looking?
Multiple suppliers, we're not, we're not committed to anyone's supplier or anyone's family of brick. So you go into our office, we've got fifty bricks samples later on and we've been picking from them. Based upon what we're looking for from a design perspective, but also obviously we got to manage the budget at the same time. So there's probably, I'm just going to off the cuff, there's about eight buildings. There's probably about twelve to fifteen, sixteen different brick types. For colors that we're using across the buildings. The larger buildings that you saw earlier, the AV buildings. Typically, we're trying to use two different colors. So we'd have a base color, which is the body of the building, and then have an accent color. And then on those larger buildings as well, we introduced a cast stone, which is like a cast stone material as well. Changes a little bit of texture and color, also to give the architectural style a little bit of blend as well. So which on that elevation is the lower right first floor part. Here, now that beige color is the stone material, the other parts of the brick. So like in that one, as an example, the end piece on the left and the brick above the stone. Those field colors, the base color is the same. And then there's a second color as an accent color. And then in the body of building on the first floor, the middle there, the accent color becomes the bottom of the building. So we're just trying to use the same material and the same thing, we have bricks on one building, different ways to create block.
Right now, just so many buildings going up, you can just put a timestamp on them. You know that they're twenty, twenty, twenty eighteen, something in that area because it's got just, just the color. You know, and, and if you want to get something that's, that's over time, like right there, you've been almost back when you almost think Georgian color. You know, so.
We're trying that, to go to the Jordans, uh, trying to stay away from a little bit of the reds, to be honest. But we're trying to create contrast with the build. And so how we do that has been a little bit of a challenge without one of those deeper reds or beyond work bricks.
And, and part of that is too, that, you know, part of the goal here, Chris, is that this feels like a neighborhood that was built. You know, again, when you look at Norton Crossing as an example, you know, each one of those buildings is identical, right? The two in the back are the same, the two in the front are the same. The intent here was that it doesn't necessarily have that same kind of feel. That each, each building feels like it's, you know, it's, it stands on its own, right? And so again, I, I, you know, I don't want to speak for, you know, the developer. But I think the idea for these liner buildings is that they have, these had a little more of a sleek, you know, look to them. Because of how they were being used along those more pedestrian roads. And again, the intent to have them, you know, with wider sidewalks and what we're doing with landscaping. And so that is part of. And so that is part of, I mean, we've had conversations, if I'm not mistaken, John. Typically, these are about two or three feet. This one, I think, is two or three feet, you know, off the sidewalk. So there's the ability to have, you know, a small landscaping bed to help soften some of those edges. Uh, but, you know, so as an example, the clubhouse, you know, here's a, you know, again, an updated view of what along Hamilton, or I'm sorry, along Broad and then turning to go down, uh, roadway two. Again, kind of looking like. And then the last one is just, you know, this, the clubhouse, you know, the clubhouse, I think, is like a, like a painted white brick. Um, again, you know, a brick, but, you know, really, again, quality building materials. Again, we're only talking about cut stone, brick, uh, hardy plank.
Some shingles. There's some others, the cast stone material.
Is there going to be more than one clubhouse for the whole area or just one?
So for phase one, um, there is one clubhouse. So in future phases, that obviously will be something, I mean, we've had conversations about, you know, in phase two, maybe it's still one clubhouse, but maybe there's an additional pool. Um, and then, you know, the goal here over the whole site, and, and maybe I shouldn't start it there, was, you know, this is intended to be a mixture of for lease and for sale product. And so going back to that initial site plan that Mike showed you, that is the intent. And I know that the developers had conversations with for-sale, uh, developers who specialize, and that's what they do. Um, and so, you know, future phases will absolutely have a component of that for sale. I, I also want you to keep in mind too, that the goal is not phase one happens and then phase two, and then phase three, and then phase four. You know, phase one is happening, but the developer and the city are having conversations with lots of other folks, whether they be the for-sale developer or commercial office users or medical, that if there's a, another use that is, you know, fits in well with the development and is, you know, approved, then, you know, that portion of a phase two or a phase three could happen right away, could happen at the same time. So it's not necessarily chronological. Obviously, you know, the, the market is only going to support so many residential units at one place being built at one time. Um, but if there was a use for a, 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 an independent senior, uh, facility, and, and there was a place on the site, you know, and, and one of the other locations that would work, that absolutely could be built right now at the same time simultaneously. So, I mean, that is part of the goal as well. So yes, I would imagine as additional residential comes online, you know, certainly the idea of adding an additional clubhouse or additional pool or those amenities is going to certainly need to, uh, increase as well.
Thank you.
I do love the sign and the, the usage flexibility. I think it's awesome.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I want to give a lot of credit to, to Mike and to John. There's a whole host of, of other folks. We have a weekly Thursday, wow, wow, that lasts an hour or two every single Thursday. Um, you know, I know you all have a lot of information, um, uh, that were, you know, was provided as part of the packet um, to see, you know, the landscaping and what, uh, we intend. That'd be the last thing that, you know, I'd want to show you. Um, just so that, you know, folks watching should be on the landscaping plan. Maybe. So again, the, you know, kind of the landscaping plan. Um, you can see again, the intent of what this center promenade, uh, will look and feel like. Um, and then this is, you know, again, what we're working towards. Um, and what we have spent a lot of time working on is how to really bring life to this, this promenade to the center area. Um, this is about one football field length. Um, and it's about 70 or so feet wide. Um, and so the idea is how do you make this, you know, a space that organically brings people together to, to sit, to hang out, to grab something to eat, um, and, and do so in a way that it doesn't just become this landscaped boulevard that you just use to walk one direction or another. Um, you know, we mentioned, you know, I want to also focus a little bit on this. Um, so this is, um, of the picture in the top is kind of the entrance that Hamilton Road, off Hamilton Road, um, Shannon Way, um, so to speak. Um, and so, yeah, that's kind of the entrance, and then you have the, the street. Um, this is, uh, a pretty large green space here. Um, and so what the developer is working on, um, is a portion of this to be a, a, a small dog park. Again, when they anticipate having, you know, a significant amount of residential here. Um, and so again, a way to program this space so that it wasn't just lawn that some people used and nobody really, you know, a lot of people didn't use it. Um, and it's a pretty significant, uh, amount of space. So you have a, a little small, uh, dog park up here, and then the back of the space really, uh, is intended to be kind of just more lawn and green space. Uh, we believe we're going to be able to keep some of the, uh, the existing trees that are in that area. Um, and then, you know, here is where then, you know, that, that realigned wood clip drive and then how you would traverse over to, um, the bottom of the hill. Um, this is where, uh, because of the topography, you know, this is that pond. Um, and you can see that the, the goal here is to build, um, an amphitheater into, um, into the, essentially the side of the hill that would then overlook, uh, overlook the pond. So, you know, again, here are some of the, uh, the visuals for, oh. Pardon me?
Are you going to stock the pond?
Are you bringing the fish? Listen, I'm, I'm trying to make sure Michael doesn't.
It's going to be stopped.
All, all kidding aside, Wes, I mean, I think the goal of the pond, and this is part of the reason we worked with the developer to, you know, include this feature, to come up with something like this, was so that the pond wasn't just retention, right? We wanted to be programmed. Obviously, we've had extensive conversations with our Parks Department about what that means. If it's stocked, if there's, if there's paddle boards, if there's whatnot. Um, and so that's, that's the goal of what this feature, this, um, will be publicly owned. I mean, so as you go back to, we think about the site plan, all of the green spaces and the promenade, those are public spaces. Those are publicly owned spaces so that the public has access to them all the time. Um, and so this is the same as we, if you think back to when we initially started talking about this site, it was how do we increase the usable square footage, the usable acreage of Whitehall Community Park? And how do we make sure that the park really is an integrated feature and public space is an integrated feature into the development? Not just the park is, you know, in the backyard, but really how do we intertwine and interconnect, you know, these, these spaces? So again, you can kind of get a sense of what we think that, uh, this green space will ultimately look like. And, I mean, I think we're, we're really excited about what, what this will be. Um, you know, again, in another place in our community for people to gather, um, for entertainment and programming, um, and to bring in both visitors and residents, um, you know, too. And there's going to be connectivity from this into the northern part of Whitehall Community Park. So again, another way to ensure that the public is utilizing, you know, that public space. Again, you know, these are all very similar. Um, and again, I know, I know council has this, but again, you can get a sense of um, just what this, you know, that center promenade is going to be with places to sit and landscaping. And so I don't know that I have any other slides necessarily to share there that would, you know, value. No, that's, that's pretty much it. Um, with that being said, are there any other questions from council at this time about the, the rezoning?
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 98?
Yeah, I'll just make a, a summary comment if I could. Um, it's hard for me to impart to this, this body politic how significant this rezoning is for the city of Whitehall. If you think about it, um, what you did at Norton, um, eradicated, um, a blight upon the community. And you're doing the same thing here. And the reality is what we were dealing with 10 years ago was that the substandard human conditions that those people were living in had the ineluctable consequence of making people think that, well, that's affordable housing. That's the only housing that's affordable. And that connotation from Woodcliff and from Fairport Gardens still festers in this community today. And the one thing we haven't mentioned about this project is that 20% of these units are going to be affordable housing. They're going to be workforce housing. And the developer is committed to that for all phases. And we can speak with pride, um, when we talk about this development. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, um, I've been doing this for 39 years. And I've been responsible for rezoning 100,000 acres of property in my career. This is the most significant accomplishment that I've ever achieved. Um, partially motivated by the fact that we were born and bred here. But also by what this administration and this council has been able to do in conjunction with this young man to my left. Um, and to form a partnership with a developer. I mean, this developer is obviously based in Miami, our portfolio is extensive, but we've done things in Lima, Peru. And to get them, to attract them to Whitehall, to put the elbow grease of two years into what you've seen tonight just speaks volumes for how far this city has come. And I couldn't be more proud to be a resident or more proud to represent, uh, any applicant than I am in this particular case. And I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Or we're good?
Of course there is.
How would you sleep without having a formal staff report?
And we did get the, uh, planning commissions minutes on this, and the staff did recommend a favorable.
Yes.
Recommendation.
And then, so I can run through that very quickly. Please spare me, since you have seen those, you see how many parcels there are that are, that are in the application to rezone. So I'm not going to go through all of those.
You can just say exhibit A.
Prefer to exhibit A if you would. Thank you, members of council. Uh, so just to run through the summary here. Um, of course, as we've mentioned, the applicant is requesting to rezone the parcels listed above and then exhibit A. Um, the staff review, just to kind of quickly go through this. Um, you know, the adopted Whitehall Development Blueprint Comprehensive Plan supports a zoning change for this proposed mixed-use development in several ways. Um, according to the plan, the section area of the city with its proximity to two major arteries of East Broad and North Hamilton Road make it a strategic space for mixed-use development, including a variety of housing options as well as green, public green spaces and commercial uses. And then the city, as demonstrated through the Whitehall Development Blueprint Comprehensive Plan, has a strong proponent to grow in a smart way by allowing more density to accommodate for the growing population of the Columbus region. This project is an opportunity for the city to add more density while blending residential with the commercial area of Broad Street. Also, this property is located at one of the major gateways into the city of Whitehall, which helps clearly establish a break between Whitehall and the city of Columbus. High-density mixed-use development is intended to be a higher intense, higher intensity and concentrated at major nodes within the city and gateways into the city. What a great way to welcome people from the Columbus to Whitehall also, must add. Uh, the comprehensive plan also outlines specific goals, objectives, and action items such as opportunities for redevelopment occurs. Uh, one goal includes promoting residential growth along major corridors with the objectives of supporting a higher density of development and mix of uses along corridors and within focus areas. Uh, the project presents an opportunity for the city to update the zoning of these parcels to reflect the recommendations in the comprehensive plan for the land use of this particular property. And the proposed zoning, rezoning simplifies the zoning process for the future development by serving as an umbrella for multiple uses, uh, including the general commerce, limited commerce, office, all of, um, residential districts run through four and apartments, um, A1 and A2. So finally, this project allows the city to continue efforts of providing new housing on vacant and underutilized lots to increase access to additional affordable housing stock, which I know that we did mention here. Uh, be it 20% of the 1,000 residential, residential units proposed would be affordable housing. Um, so with that being said, staff recommendation to the city council is to provide a favorable recommendation of the application for, uh, requesting the rezoning of the parcels in that exhibit A. So, um, with that being said, I will let you get to your business unless you have any questions for me.
And I've spoken air. It's appendix A.
See, now you got me. Now you got me speaking out of turn here.
Anyone else? Is there anyone that wishes to speak against or opposes ordinance 98, 2021? I will close, uh, the public hearing on ordinance 98, 2021. You need a minute? Yes, we can. Yes. So we will take a five-minute break. We're back. Okay, verification of copies. Secretary, please call a roll on whether each member of council is given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Yes.
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll get started on our, uh, third readings tonight. And, uh, first is ordinance 95, 2021. Amending zoning map attached to chapter 1122 in 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C29 to allow its first squash concepts LLC to operate a car wash at Stafford Smith on the property located at 3657 East Main Street, parcel number 090-008371, owned by 3657 EMain LLC.
Mr. President, pro tip, wish to introduce and move for the adoption of ordinance 95, 2021.
Second?
I have a motion by Morrison and second by Heck for the introduction and adoption of ordinance 95, 2021. Any discussion? Solve, would you please call a roll?
Onson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 95, 2021 has been approved. Ordinance 98, 2021, amending a zoning map attached to chapter 1122 in 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amended, changing the zoning of property located on East Broad Street, Hamilton Road, Woodcliff Drive, Midcliff Drive, and Pop Road parcel numbers listed in appendix A from apartment district A2, exceptionally used EU and floodplain district FP2, planned unit development, PUD, property owned by the city of Whitehall and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, pro tip, wish to introduce and move for the adoption of ordinance 98, 2021.
Second?
A motion by Morrison and second by Rodriguez for the introduction and adoption ordinance 98, 2021. Any discussion? Solve, would you please call a roll?
Onson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 98, 2021 has been approved. Under second readings, we have ordinance 99, 2021, authorizing adoption of November 2021 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 99, 2021, suspension of rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Rodriguez and second by Coniston for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance 99, 2021. Is there any discussion? Solve, would you please call a roll?
Onson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Oh, more. Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance 99, 2021.
Thank you. Move to adopt?
Second?
I have a motion by Rodriguez and second by Coniston for. I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Coniston for adoption of ordinance ninety-nine, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Ordinance ninety-nine, twenty, twenty-one has been approved. That is all we have under second reading. Under first reading, we have ordinance one oh five, twenty, twenty-one, accepting certain storm and sanitary easements from Norton Crossing Apartments LLC, parcel number zero nine zero dash zero zero eight four one three zero nine zero dash zero zero eight four one five, zero nine zero dash zero zero eight four one seven, zero nine zero dash zero zero eight four two two, and zero nine zero 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 eight four two three. Ordinance one oh five, twenty, twenty-one is being read by title only. Ordinance one oh six, twenty, twenty-one, proving and making a fund transfer in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents from unappropriated monies in the general fund one oh one to the debt service fund four oh one, approving and making supplemental appropriation of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents from the debt service fund four oh one to the debt service account four oh one point zero 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 point five zero zero zero, undeciling an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh six, twenty, twenty-one, move to the suspension of all rules.
Second?
A motion by Rodriguez and a second by Morrison for the introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance one oh six, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh six, twenty, twenty-one.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second?
A motion by Rodriguez and a second by Morrison for the adoption of ordinance one oh six, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Ordinance one oh six, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Orders number one oh seven, twenty, twenty-one, approving and making supplemental appropriation, nine eight thousand four hundred dollars from the debt service fund four oh one to the debt service account four oh one point zero 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 point five zero zero zero, undeciling an emergency. Ordinance one oh seven, twenty, twenty-one is being read by title only. Ordinance one oh eight, twenty, twenty-one, approving and making an appropriation transfer, fourteen thousand dollars from various expense accounts in the parks budget to the rec forward slash park fund expense account one oh one dash seven hundred dash five nine zero 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 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, pro temp, I'd like to introduce ordinance number one oh eight, twenty, twenty-one, and the suspension of the rules, please.
Second?
A motion by Cantor and a second by Coniston for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance one oh eight, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh eight, twenty, twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, pro temp. Move to adopt, please.
Second?
I have a motion by Cantor and a second by Coniston for the adoption of ordinance one oh eight, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Ordinance one oh eight, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one oh nine, twenty, twenty-one, authorizing and approving supplemental appropriation, amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars from unappropriate monies in the street maintenance repair fund two oh one to the street new equipment expense account two oh one dash zero 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 dash five three zero zero zero, undeciling an emergency.
Mr. President, pro temp, I'd like to introduce ordinance number one oh nine, twenty, twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Heck and a second by Morrison for the introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance one oh nine, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh nine, twenty, twenty-one, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Move to adopt.
Second?
I have a motion by Heck and a second by Morrison for the adoption of ordinance one oh nine, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes.
Ordinance one oh nine, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one ten, twenty, twenty-one, authorizing and approving an appropriation transfer in the amount of eight thousand dollars from the contingency expense account one oh one point nine five zero point five nine nine zero zero to the civil testing expense account one oh one point one eight zero zero point five three zero zero zero, undeciling an emergency.
Mr. President, pro temp, I'd like to introduce ordinance one ten, twenty, twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules. Second?
I have a motion by Coniston and a second by Heck for the introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance one ten, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ten, one ten, twenty, twenty-one.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Coniston and a second by Heck for the adoption of ordinance one ten, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance one ten, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one eleven, twenty, twenty-one, approving and making supplemental appropriation, amount of four hundred thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the general fund one oh one to the income tax refunds expense account one oh one point three five zero point five seven zero zero zero, undeciling an emergency.
I'd like to introduce ordinance one eleven, twenty, twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Coniston and a second by Cantor for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance one eleven, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one eleven, twenty, twenty-one.
Move to adopt.
Second?
I have a motion by Coniston and a second by Cantor to adopt ordinance eleven, one eleven, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance one eleven, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance one twelve, twenty, twenty-one, authorizing and approving supplemental appropriation, amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the general fund one oh one to the one oh one point nine five zero point five six five zero zero insurance bonds expense account and declaring emergency.
Phew, Mr. President, pro temp, I'd like to introduce ordinance one twelve, twenty, twenty-one, move to the suspension of all rules, please.
Second?
A motion by Cantor and a second by Morrison for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance one twelve, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll? I'm small right now.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one twelve, twenty, twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, pro temp. Move to adopt, please.
Second?
I have a motion by Cantor and a second by Morrison for introduction, for the adoption of ordinance one twelve, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance one twelve, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Resolution thirty, twenty, twenty-one, resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, pro temp, I'd like to introduce resolution thirty, twenty, twenty-one, move to suspension of all rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Elmore for introduction and suspension of the rules on ordinance thirty, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on resolution thirty, twenty, twenty-one.
Second?
A motion by Rodriguez and a second by Elmore for the adoption of resolution thirty, twenty, twenty-one. Any discussion, Chris? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yeah.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution thirty, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted. Resolution thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one. It's recognizing and honoring Roscoe Crozier, Crozier, on his one-hundredth birthday, November fourth, twenty, twenty-one, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, pro temp, I'd like to introduce resolution number thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Elmore and a second by Rodriguez for the introduction and suspension of rules on resolution thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one. Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on resolution thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one.
Move to adopt.
Second?
I have a motion by Elmore and a second by Rodriguez for the adoption of resolution thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Miss Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Hundred times yes.
Cantor?
I can't go a hundred and one, but a hundred times yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Hundred times yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one has been adopted and at this time I would like to turn this over to Councilperson Elmore.
Resolution number thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one reads, recognizing and honoring Roscoe Crozier on his, on his one-hundredth birthday, November fourth, twenty, twenty-one, and declaring an emergency. Whereas Roscoe Crozier was born in Charleston, West Virginia, on November the fourth, nineteen twenty-one, to proud parents, Britt and Barbara Crozier. And whereas Roscoe was called by the draft board for his physical examination and upon being examined, the doctor told Roscoe he had a death defect in his back and was not qualified to be drafted. And whereas Roscoe had the desire and determination to serve his country in one capacity or another, he went to work in an ammunition factory in Nitro, West Virginia, making explosives. And whereas Roscoe has four adult children, one son and three daughters, numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. He may even have great-great-grandchildren, but no one's counting, longer counting. And whereas Roscoe has persevered, even having lived through segregation, Jim Crow, and other forms of discrimination. And whereas Roscoe expresses great admiration for his siblings because each sibling pitched in to help others, help the others get through college after graduating themselves. Roscoe realized after the tragic death of, death of his father, that his mother needed help by providing care for the other children, so he did not attend college. And whereas Roscoe is known to be a kind man, he has a sense of humor and has tried to be a good person to others along his journey. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of city of Whitehall, Ohio, that the council and administration on behalf of the citizens of the city of Whitehall proudly recognize and honor Roscoe Crozier for his one hundred years of longevity and wish him the happiest of birthdays. That the clerk of council be his and hereby directed to forward a copy, pardon me, a certified copy of this resolution to Roscoe Crozier. That this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the health, public health, safety, and welfare, and for the further reason that Roscoe Crozier's one-hundredth birthday is November the fourth, twenty, twenty-one. Wherefore, this resolution shall go, shall go into full effect and affect immediately upon the passage by the city, by, I'm sorry, by the council of the city of Whitehall and approval by the mayor. Thank you very much for this resolution and I will present this on the fourth with all the other birthday cards that he receives at Ashford. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Yes, a hundred years old, a hundred years young, my goodness.
This is our second opportunity for full public and I believe, Miss Sog, you have one item?
Yes. Gerald Dixon, eighty-seven, eight thirty-eight, seventy-seven, Donut Street. On this election night, I just wanted to take a moment to praise four and three, Councilor Larry Morrison, for knowing what's, what civic duty is. It is not doing your part where you dominate this space, a reasonable time to fulfill one's duty. It is not meant to be a career where one person's ego or monetary needs dominates an office made for multiple citizens to serve. If one really wants to serve their community, do eight years and leave like Mr. Morrison and open up the seat so that others can also, like yourselves, be of service to the community in this capacity. Anything else is merely selfish to your fellow community members. So then, thank you, Councilor Morrison, for your eight years of service to our community and bowing out with the grace and consideration for those out there who, like you, merely want to give back to their community, which has been so good to them.
I would assume that Mr. Dixon didn't vote for the third term. Would he voted for that in the elections?
Probably didn't realize why Mr. Morrison didn't want to go for another term either. And I commend Mr. Morrison on that.
But I did vote for the third term.
We've been here so long, I think it's time we raise her.
Yeah.
There's Dango, she's a senior.
Dango.
Indoors are in the parking lot.
In the parking.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? Oh, that brings us to full council. Guess who gets to go first, councilperson Coniston?
I do and I, I'm going to be very brief because I haven't had dinner yet. So thank you all for watching and thank you for viewing and thankfully we have Councilor Morrison till the end of the year. So we're gonna save all of our goodbyes for then.
All right, councilperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Temp. I'm going to be briefer than that. Thank you all for watching. Burrows, I'd love you and I'll be home really soon.
Councilperson Heck?
I guess I'll be quick too. Thank you, everybody, for watching and those that came in. Thank you for those that wrote in and hope everybody has a good week.
All right, councilperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President, pro temp. I would like to also thank everyone for watching. Thank Gary for his very kind words and this ordinance we passed on the Woodcliff Midcliffe. Long time coming. Hope I have a good one.
Thank you, Larry. Councilperson Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to Mr. Crozier this Thursday, happy birthday to Joy on the next Tuesday, and other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Chris. Councilperson Elmore?
Thank you, President, pro temp, thank you for those that have watched this evening, happy birthday, Joy. I know Mr. Crozier will appreciate this and he gets all the other cards and everything with that, and it's from the city of Whitehall. And good luck to everybody that ran here.
First, I'd like to thank everybody tuned in at home and the people that were here, thank you, and I want to thank the administration and council for putting up with me and Zach. I want to thank you and your team and all those that are working on that, that park area in Woodcliff Midcliff, and, you know, we talked years and years ago about what, what it might become, and it's, like Larry said, it's taken a while, but it's happening, and it, that is moving, that's probably the single biggest thing that I can think of since I've been on council that, that we can be proud of. So, other than that, I wish everybody running for office and reelection, good luck, especially the ones I voted for. All right? I'll take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Elmore to adjourn.
You're close.
Other way around.
Other way around, but you're close.
Reverse that. It's the way I put it in.
That's right, that is true.
Ms. Sog, would you please call a roll?
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Eight, thirty? Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Hundred times yes.
Elmore? Yes.
That's it. Seriously, Zach, thank you.